Uh, the time is, uh, the day is February first. If you believe that, one month's already gone. Uh, the time is one thirty. Uh, the board is in session, uh, for its weekly open business meeting. Two commissioners are present. Uh, I'd like to have you introduce yourself, starting over here.
Rachel Gannou, Ada County Assessor's Office.
Tom Bridge, Clerk's Office.
Eric Phillips, Operations.
Evan Colling, Treasurer's Office.
Bethany Calley, HR.
Evan Evans, Procurement.
Bert Cantoon, Solid Waste.
Al Carney, Operations.
Kathy Corliss, Procurement.
Robin Sweeney, Procurement.
Evan Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Tom Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Subs, RT guy.
Keith, we're boarding with the Clerk's Office.
Okay, good enough. And we also have on the bridge here, we have, uh, Robin Sweeney, Tom Audi, and Debbie Scott. And Evan's right there. Okay, uh, ma'am clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
No changes to the agenda. We'll start right off with, uh, resolutions. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine five three. Resolution creating pre-approved lists for professional architectural engineering testing and land survey services. Any, uh, any discussion on that? On that resolution? Anybody want to tell us about it? Operations or Procurement, tell us about this.
Somebody. So commissioners, this is a, uh, resolution to put together a pre-approved list for architectural engineering services. What it does is it establishes, uh, five different or six different lists for the various disciplines. Uh, so operations can go at any time during a certain project and pick from that list for those types of services. Uh, what this allows operations to do is to be a little bit more flexible and nimble on these projects. Meaning that we get started on, uh, construction type projects early on and earlier on in the process. Uh, so we don't have to go through this, uh, um, RFQ process to hire a, the architect or engineer. We just choose from the list when it's appropriate.
All right, any other discussion?
And there's a process for getting on that list, correct?
There is.
It's, and there's timing they have to, uh, apply in doing a certain time.
Yes, so this, uh, list will be established for up to five years. Uh, but it can, uh, be, uh, mo- modified or changed with another, uh, RFQ down the road, so you want to do that.
Okay, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two nine five three, and I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine five three as listed on the agenda.
Second motion, you've heard the motion, all in favor? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two nine five four. A resolution for sole source procurement of secure cages to hold election materials. Anybody want to mention anything, if you can tell us about that, you know?
Mr. Chairman Daly, I can speak to resolution two nine five four. When we identified and designed our election carts to hold all of our gear at the two hundred-ish precincts, we went through the procurement and the legal process to identify the vendor that could manufacture them. We've already put fifteen in production. Now what we're looking to do is just bypass going back out to build or to bid and keep working with the same metal worker that already has the renderings to build the cage, sole source, and just mass produce the rest of them.
Okay, any other questions or discussions?
And it's, it's my understanding that this is something that other people are looking at in terms of what we're doing and how it's functioning, correct? And there's interest in that, correct?
Chairman Daly, lots of interest. So we, at the, a couple weeks back, at the elections conference put on by the Secretary of State and IAC, we got to share best practices, and so many counties around the state are latching on to the thought of being able to secure all of their precinct material in one secure cage. Chief judge shows up with the key, everything's there to plug and play. So it is leading the, the state in, in trends and is becoming very popular with a lot of conversation.
Thank you for your foresight in doing that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, good enough. Is there any more discussion on, uh, resolution number two nine five four before I close the public hearing? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine five four and call for, uh, a, a motion.
I move to approve resolution two nine five four as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the, uh, public hearing on resolution number two nine five five. A resolution approving an allocation from the Ada County Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Fund grant award to the flood control district number ten. Anybody wants to speak on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you can speak on that, yes.
I can speak to that. So this is an Ada County contribution towards to flood control district ten. Um, they are doing a new topographic model and hydra- hydraulic modeling, and we're all, several cities are contributing to this effort. So Ada County, um, is also contributing. And hopefully we can anticipate a prevention of flooding.
And Mr. Chairman, just as a comment as well, uh, I work with flood control district ten in terms of the initial model. Uh, it's working very well, and we at least anticipate possibly being able to use that in terms of using flood control water for some of our projects, like Hubbard Lake Study for the aqua recharge. So, uh, this will help us fine tune availability of flood control water for some other things for...
Well, that's good.
Uh, recharge, uh, projects that we have in mind.
Right, and it should be noted that flood control district ten starts at Glenwood Bridge and goes out west. How far west does it go, do you know?
Uh, about, about the middle.
About the middle, yeah. That's flood control district ten, so it doesn't include much of city voices. All right, any other discussion on, uh, resolution number two ninety five five? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two nine five five and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution number two nine five five as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have, uh, we have Bob. We have some bid openings, okay?
You do. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, before any of this more, uh, this afternoon, under, uh, new business, we have a couple openings. The first of which is the opening of bid two four zero one three, the Ada County Jail Pod C Heating Loop Repipe twenty twenty four. And, uh, we received three responses for, uh, this project, and, um, Evan has our bonfire procurement system all queued up. If you're ready for us to open.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I think so. Maybe we could just review the process just a little bit and that, on this, on this and any of the bid openings.
Yeah.
Uh, was this, was this in our budget or was it in a, in a, you know, a larger budget that included, uh, a, uh, one of the other projects?
Um, this would be an operations project, uh...
Mr. Chairman, this is part of our deferred maintenance budget that we have. Yep, and so we have an issue with, uh, heating loop out on Pod C, and so this, uh, we're going to replace those lines from our, uh, boiler units all the way, uh, through Pod C.
And so, as I recall, uh, when we adopt a budget, we, we set aside so much money just for this kind of stuff in the operations department for deferred maintenance.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And then, and then you analyze how mu- who would, who would be eligible, you put out a request for bids? And then, and then, and now we're opening those bids, and you have to, you have pre-bid meeting and all that?
Yeah, so, uh, the, uh, process starts off, we, we, uh, send, send out the requests, uh, to take in, uh, bids, and then, um, we do hold a, uh, pre-bid meeting, and we held that at, at the jail, and we invite, uh, those that want to participate in the process to come on out and take a look at the project. And, uh, then they give us their bids, and that's what's before us, uh, this afternoon.
And that's what we're now doing, we're now opening, so a lot of work goes into it, and then we open the bids. All right, well, let's see if bonfire works today. All right. Fire it up.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this afternoon, we'll be looking at the name of the bidder, uh, the bid amount. Uh, there'll also be a fifteen thousand dollar, uh, owner's contingency in on this project. It's not giving too many, one sec. Put Evan on the spot here. I asked you if it was working. I forgot to put myself. Now Evan, will this have a spreadsheet for us this afternoon? Uh, yes. All right, so there's our spreadsheet up there with the three, uh, bidders. Uh, the top, uh, bit lined up there is the total bid amount. So, um, Cascade Enterprise Incorporated is our first bidder, they have a total bid amount of five hundred thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Bidder number two is Lacy Mechanical Incorporated with a total bid amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And bidder number three, Page Mechanical Group Incorporated with a total bid amount of two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars. So, quite a little bit there in the spread.
Quite a, quite a little on the table there.
There it is. So we'll need just a little bit of time to review these, uh, bids to make sure that they've complied administratively, and, uh, the evaluation group would like to request that this be tabled for award to the, uh, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four open business meeting.
Okay. All right, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table award bid twenty-four zero one-three Ada County Jail Pod C Heating Loop Repipe twenty twenty-four to the February tw- thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, moving on.
Our second item up for, uh, consideration today is the opening of bid two four zero two-nine, the Ada County Landfill Trash Capture Fencing. And, uh, we received six responses for this project, and Robin has those all ready to open up if you're ready.
Okay, all right, let's open them up, Robin. While she's opening, was there a lot, a lot of people went out to look at it to, before they made the bid, or?
I don't recall that, I don't think we had a pre-bid on this one, no.
No, but we had a fair amount of document takers, so.
Okay.
I have a good number, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Is this new fencing or is this replacing existing fencing?
So this will replace their existing, um, um, trash capture, uh, fencing that they have there. They have, uh, I think, uh, two or three or four, something where in that neighborhood of fencing that they have out there already, but it's, uh, uh, dilapidated and, and, uh, they're going to use it for other, uh, purposes and...
Herb, I think.
We got Herb there, he's near you. I'm sure.
And commissioners, um, we are replacing existing age assets along with trying to maximize or encompassing up the waste footprint area to prevent litter from blowing out over the property. So it's, it's a combination of both.
Do we have bonfire up and running?
We do.
All right, go ahead.
All right, so, uh, as I mentioned, we have six bidders up there. The first bidder is, uh, Conwall Incorporated, and, um, they have a total bid amount of a hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, the second bidder is Diamond S Fencing Incorporated with a total bid amount of ninety-two thousand dollars. Uh, bidder number three is Hawaii Drillers Incorporated doing business as coastal netting, and they have a total bid amount of a hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, bidder number, uh, four is Meta Technologies Incorporated with a, uh, total bid amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Technology International Incorporated is bidder number five, and they have a total bid amount of a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. And rounding out our bidders is Wind and Sun Protection Incorporated with a total bid amount of two hundred and ten thousand, twenty-five dollars and seventy-six. So, um, we'll need a little bit of time with these, uh, bids as well to kind of review them for the administrative compliance, and, uh, we'd request that this be tabled for award to the February sixth, two thousand twenty-four open business meeting.
Uh, just to reiterate, the, the process here was the same as the previous bid, correct?
That is correct. So, uh, we go through and solicit the, uh, request for the bids, and, uh, uh, the bidders, uh, uh, give back their bid for pull those two's through bonfire, and they were at the opening, and so, uh, by I O code, we'll take the lowest responsive bidder.
Lot left on the table there, table's better.
There is a little bit of spread.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So question to, uh, Herb or, uh, or Operations.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk about maybe, um, you know, how critical do you feel that this project is, uh, to be replaced this year? Or is it possible this could be, uh, delayed a year? What's the, what's the status of the, you know, the overall necessity of the, the project right now?
I think in order to help improve our compliance with the applicable regulations, um, the better we can encompass the, the fill area. It's not entirely encompassed, but we want to increase that coverage area to reduce the litter blowing off sites, or offsite, I should say. Uh, if we have litter leaving the working base, that would, that creates additional work for labor to help pick up the litter and what have you. So I think from a cost perspective overall, um, it would be appropriate to continue to move forward with this process. Because of the existing items that are pretty well aged, um, some of them are, I would say, have exceeded their useful life.
So are you, you're replacing existing fence but then adding additional fence?
Yes, yes, yes.
Did you look at, you know, whether or not just putting in the new fence and leaving the existing fence for now?
Well, we'll try to do this, capitalize whatever we can to improve. Uh, whatever has failed, we will either scrap or try to maximize and combine other components of the fencing system which we can. So there's some value also in the scrap value on items that are not repairable.
So i- i- in your opinion, could, is this project that could be held off till next year, or is it critical to do it?
It potentially could, but there is the risk of adding additional cost for labor to clean up the area if we don't have the proper coverage.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I know this was a pretty high priority of the, uh, previous landfill director to, to, to get this accomplished this year. Um, looking at those fences up there, you can tell that they're in pretty poor shape and they do need to be replaced.
Well, it should also be noted that this is an enterprise fund, that, uh, that, so any, any of these expenses comes out of the enterprise fund and not out of the property tax fund. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, any further discussion? I'll accept the motion.
Uh...
Go ahead. I'll move to table the award of bid twenty-four zero two-nine Ada County Landfill Trash Capture Fencing to February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, thank you. All right. Okay, moving on, we have licenses. The Clerk's Office keeps us full of licenses.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
We have, uh, four licenses to, uh, to, uh, these are new licenses. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the four new licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, okay, we have a Clerk's Office up now, and we have, uh, a prune professional at the Clerk's Office to fill in for the clerk.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the vote of confidence, Chairman. Good afternoon. Couple of quick updates. The first one is planting the election seed. We're only a hundred and nine days out from the next election. So as you can imagine, Saul and team are already gearing up a lot of strategies and efforts, and come, come May, they'll shine like always. I'm also excited to talk about some of our office culture. We landed number two in the best places to work last year in the state of Idaho. Really, really proud of that, but we're also highly competitive, so that process starts up again, and we're going to see if we can, if we can advance a slot.
That's twice in a row you've been number two, isn't it?
You were number one the year before.
Let's not go the other direction.
Okay, yeah, yeah, let's go up, all right. Thanks, that's good.
And, uh, I think you can speak to this as well, it's just nice to be back. We've been at, uh, attending alongside our sheriff, assessor, and treasurer, and, and our board. The, um, I thought it was a really good conference in the mid, mid legislative winter, but, uh, it's good to get back to the courthouse and get back to work. So that's, that's what's on our storefront.
Okay, well, good.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, next up, we have the Claims Journal. I'll accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I'll move to ratify the authorization given on January, uh, twenty-ninth to pay the claims on the Claims Journal dated January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion. Okay, you've heard the, uh, the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, do we have anybody here from the Assessor's Office?
I am here, Mr. Chair.
All right. Oh, do you have anything for us? I see we have some tax cancellations.
Nothing to report outside of just here for questions in regards to those cancellations.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Does any, any on board have any questions or comments?
Personal actions first.
Oh, yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that next. Excuse me, we got, we got, we bounced over personal actions. Uh, I'll take a, a motion on the personal actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda. That the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the tax cancellations. Unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion on the tax cancellations, which, by the way, for those watching, these are not cancellations at all, they are mere adjustments. Or a partial cancellation, I guess.
And, uh, could, could you, uh, uh, explain exactly what that means?
Well, these are, these are homeowners'.
Just for people...
These are homeowners exemptions primarily, are they not?
Uh, a mixture of characteristic errors and homeowners exemptions, correct?
Right, so they're adjusting the, the, the assessed value, or not assessed value, but the taxable value, which then would reduce their, their total tax liability. People still have to pay taxes, but, uh, this adjusted, so they're not quite paid as much.
Right, and the homeowner exemption is based on when they have fly for it, and it has to be adjusted based on that, correct?
Yep. Okay.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which include one tax cancellation for twenty twenty-two and six tax cancellations for twenty twenty-three. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have somebody from the Treasurer's Office.
I'm here. Afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Treasurer's Office. Uh, Treasurer Maude has been at the IAC Legislative Conference this week, and, uh, beyond our normal tax collection business, we are preparing for the misroll, which, uh, we're hoping to do next week and get those misrolled bills out.
Okay, well, well, thank you. All right, next up is, uh, the landfill termination agreement number one five two nine three between Ada County and Loomis acre Wildlife Management. So the, 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 uh, the bird didn't work, huh?
What's been conveyed to me is the current vendor has not been successful at remediation of the birds that are present on site. Uh, we've worked with the vendor to try to improve the situation, but it sounds like, um, he may not be qualified for the work at hand, and is not able to meet the scope of the, the project.
When, when the birds, when the, uh, when the bird was there, did, did he do it, did the bird do any good with the...
Did not appear to be successful. So in my experience typically, uh, when the, the falcons are present, they are usually very effective on mitigating the presence of birds.
But this falcon wasn't trained well on, or his trainer wasn't trained well on, something.
I'm, I'm not sure on the details there, but, uh, the birds remained on site.
Bottom line is it didn't intimidate him.
I've seen where they've gotten successful enough, falcon, they were, the vehicle driving on site would be sufficient to scare the birds away because they are now aware that the birds are residing in those vehicles or falcons, so, um, we're hoping to try to find a...
Well, I've heard that, uh, that's the reason we went away, went away with the contract again, but oh, the, the, the falcons will chase them all off, but...
That's correct.
Apparently they didn't. Okay, any board? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Another, another question, so we are retooling, trying to figure out another methodology, is that...
Our plan is to attempt to reach out to number two, a vendor number two who was on the bid, and, and see if they're still interested in performing the services for a remediation on site.
All right, 'cause, 'cause you have, in other areas, you've seen where this has worked.
Yes, sir.
And the, and the, the, the seagulls notice a truck coming on, and they go, oh, we're out of here.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you.
All right, I'll accept the motion on the termination of the, of the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the termination of agreement number fifteen two ninety-three as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Uh, next up on the agenda is approval of minutes for, uh, one-ten-twenty-four, uh, for, uh, our public hearing, and one-sixteen, open minutes meeting and board of equalization. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, um, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Expo Idaho. Next up, we have Expo Idaho has a couple of events, a Gem State Comic Con, Colossus Girl Entertainment, and Quincy Nera. I'll accept a motion on those events.
I move to approve the two interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have, uh, Barbara Park and Education Event Center. We have five events. I'll accept a motion on those five events.
I'll move to approve the five Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have thirty-four agreements. Any questions or discussion on any of the agreements before we accept the motion?
Mr. Chair. So regarding agreement one-five-five-six-three, agreement between Ada County and Hellman Construction Company for driver's licensing office building at Benjamin Campus Glass Project. Uh, maybe operations could talk about that and.
Wait, you want to just, you just want to pull that from the, from the list of agreements? One-five-five-six-three?
Well, I want to ask a question about it and then see if we can pull it.
All right, well. You wanted to, okay, we can talk about it if we pull it and then, then we'll talk about it.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. So, uh, there's been a unanimous consent request to pull agreement one-five-five-six-three from the list and discuss that agreement. Any other agreements you want to pull from the list?
I think that was it.
Okay, I accept the motion to approve the balance of the agreements first. Is there a motion?
So it'd be thirty-three agreements. I move to approve the thirty-three agreements minus item G fifteen-five-sixty-three as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have left, uh, of the agreements, we have, uh, agreement one-five-five-six-three, and there's been a request for operations to talk about that. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, the director of the driver's license services, um, requested that dividing glass be put up between the customer-facing area and the clerks that are serving the customers. His new facility out in Meridian, the folks that work at that facility love that arrangement. Uh, they feel safer, it's better control of paperwork, moving things in and out. Um, so we went out and priced it, we put it out to bid, had contractors come and take a look at it, did a small design for it and, um, yeah, so we, we've sent them the contract, they've signed the contract and here it is.
So you, you did the designing work yourself?
Uh, we, we used our, our guys over at LCA who did a small design for us and we, um, we put that as an exhibit part of the contract, yes, sir.
How many bids did we get?
Uh, this was the only bid that we received on it. Uh, we had, goodness, we had three people show up and from up, two people show up to the pre-bid meeting. Uh, timing was an issue for some people because they can't work during the hours of operation. As you understand, the driver's license facility sees a lot of people in and out of that facility, uh, so we had to move it to after-hours, which, um, limited to one bidder that showed up to bid.
Okay, and as I understand it, uh, this was actually on the sheriff's budget specifically, was it not? Heard anybody here speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Um, they asked for the budget last year. It was part of their supplemental, if I remember correctly. Uh, it was approved and, uh, we've been working since, uh, September last year to start getting the documents we needed together to put this out to bid. And we just got to that point, uh, just over the holidays, where we got to the point where we could bid it.
All right. Okay, any other questions?
Do you know what the, the cost is on this one?
Um, I don't have the cost in front of me. I apologize. Deb, do you remember? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we'll double check on that, but it was under two-hundred thousand dollars.
So this is another one. I'm probably gonna keep picking all these projects until we actually come up with a plan to finance the jail, 'cause this sounds like another project that could be held off for a year or more.
Well, one of the reasons that, sorry, Commissioner, is that, that for just safety, um, apparently there was at one point in time that someone tried to jump over the counter. So really, it's for safety as well for Ada County employees. So as a factor there that we might want to take into consideration as well.
Mr. Chairman, the low bid was one-thirty-six.
One-thirty-six, seven hundred. Hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Yeah, I, I, yeah, 'cause it, it's on the contract. We don't know what the winner of that is. It's, it's, it's hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
To me, it just seems like one, another one that we could potentially table, uh, till we do come up with a plan to finance the jail. You know, you, you look at a hundred sixty, thirty-six thousand, that could be a one to two full-time construction workers working for a year on the jail. You know, when I, when I kind of think of it in that, in that term, I, I have to go, okay, maybe we, uh, we should pull the brakes on, on some of these things, but, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if, if I may speak to that, we, um, you know, we're careful in these projects as we go into design. We meet with our end users, specifically the driver's license facility. Uh, we budget it in a way that's, um, makes sense to the county. Uh, we are careful in our design. And not only that, we also are very careful to not put something out to bid that we can't stand behind if the winning contractor gets it. What that does is it kind of creates an atmosphere where contractors might look and say, well, if I bid this job, if I put with all the effort to get it, are they gonna pull it away from it? So I, I understand principally what you're saying, uh, but because this was appropriated, uh, we've gone through the entire process of reviewing the scope of the work, understanding the end user's needs, and, um, once again, it was approved last year. I, I think it would be unwise to start pulling projects like this, especially to qualified bidders who, uh, went through the effort to put a lot of time in bidding it and understanding and getting the manpower in place to make this happen. That's my thoughts.
Well, and I, I would agree with that because I think, uh, to, to get a public works license, 'cause they all have to have a public works license to them, aren't? They have to rely on the government that's, that's putting it out to bid, will actually follow through on the bid. We require them to have a bond to make sure they can do the work. And it would seem to me that it would, that it would be in our best interest to always, if we put something out to bid, unless there's some extraordinary circumstances that we follow through and award the bid. Now, in this kind of a situation, this particular one, I remember, I can remember specifically when it was in front of us for, for the budget. I was kind of, kind of weak on it myself at, at the time. I, I didn't know that much about it. I didn't know if there was a safety issue involved. And at that point in time, uh, we, we could have easily turned it down and we wouldn't have gone through this whole process of getting bids and, and expecting people to, us to act on it. So I think that is the more appropriate time to be doing that. And some of these other projects, a more appropriate time would be in advance of when we go out to bid and when, all that, I think, if we wanna. And, and it's a laudable effort that you, that you want to do, Commissioner, but I think if it's done a little differently, it might, may be a little different result. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I would weigh in on that, that as well, 'cause I, I sympathize with Commissioner Davidson's point of trying to be judicious in how we use our money.
Of course.
But, uh, I think the budget process we're going through right now is, is the time to do that, 'cause we're planning for the next, next fiscal year. And having been in private business and having that situation that Josh described, it's, uh, it's not pleasant to have been, have anticipated, uh, a government contract relying on the, you know, the integrity of a government entity is probably gonna follow through. And then having that fall through and having anticipated something and gone actually out and, and got product that, uh, at a cheaper price because I was confident I was gonna be able to use it and then not able to use it. And so it's, uh, I, I, I think it's the integrity of, of our, our county as well in terms of if we expect legitimate bidders to come forward and we, we need to respect them too, so. Uh, I, I, but I, I, like I said, I sympathize with his, his trying to find money for things that we need and the jail is one of those places. Uh, so I do respect that and agree with, agree with him in that context.
Well, yeah, and, and, and so do I, but, but, but there's, there's other circumstances that we do, do need to consider. I mean, uh, and one of them is the integrity of the county. If we put something out to bid, we better have a pretty darn good reason why we don't award the bid. 'Cause if we want people to keep bidding on our projects anyway, 'cause what it could do, it could have a reverse effect. It could say, well, county, you can't rely on them, so I'm gonna double, I'm gonna increase the bid quite a bit just in case I do get it. I think it's important to, that we, that we have integrity in our process. So I want to thank you all for, for doing that honor, 'cause you, how many bids do you put out each year?
Roughly about a hundred.
About a hundred. All right. All right, any other discussion? All right, well, I'll accept the motion.
I would move to accept, uh, agreement number fifteen-five-sixty-three as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the document, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're moving along. We have the weekly indigent items. I'll accept the motion on the weekly indigent item.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated February first, twenty twenty-four and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any further business need to be brought before the board? Hearing that, we'll be in recess. Thank you, thank you. Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is the first day of February. The time is, can't quite count on that.
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine, nine. Yeah. It's two oh nine. The Board of Commissioners sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District is open, is in session to conduct this weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. We also have with us.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Sean Rain, paramedics. Matt Clark, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
We have no changes to the agenda. Do we have, first up would be our claims journal. I'll accept a motion on our claims journal.
I move to ratify the January twenty-ninth, to pay the claims on the claims journal. January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four regarding EMS expenditures.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Pay your bills.
Excellent. Our vendors will be thrilled.
I'll bet. Okay, personnel actions. Do we, we have a, a personnel action? I'll accept a motion on personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel action as listed on the agenda and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the approval of the minutes for one twenty-three twenty-four. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next, motion carries. All right, next up, we have three agreements. Any question or discussions on any of these agreements?
Mr. Chair, the, the first agreement on there, that Haas Safety Systems, that's kind of an interesting one. So it's a system that we'll have incorporated in our ambulance that will basically send a signal through our router. We have a, a mobile router. And anybody using the Waze app and currently Stellantis vehicles, it will actually alert a driver through their car. It'll tell them that we're coming so that they can pull over and, and move out of our way. So just kind of a, a safety enhancement. And that company is working with other, you know, probably Ford, Chevy, the other manufacturers to get that incorporated into their vehicles. But it's a pretty neat thing.
Where does the, where do they see the signal?
It'll come through the radio and just alert them that there's an emergency vehicle coming up behind them.
Like, it goes on all FM AM bandwidth or?
No, it, it actually goes through the car's computer, I'm assuming, and lets them know there's an emergency or an emergency vehicle approaching them. Yeah.
Interesting.
And then the Waze app, it's an app you can put on your phone that gives you vehicle alerts and traffic alerts and that kind of.
I've got that Waze app.
Works pretty good.
Yeah, so now it'll tell you an ambulance is coming.
Oh, yeah, ambulance is coming.
Right.
Okay, well, that's good too. Any other questions?
What's the Idaho Medical Academy?
Idaho Medical Academy is, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, is a local school that does EMT and advanced EMT classes. They also do CPR, I think lobotomy, a bunch of different courses, but this is specific to that AHA training side agreement, so.
Is it for us to use their facility or them to use our facility?
No, it's just the agreement so they can purchase their cards through us for the American Heart Association, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Not, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the three agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I have EMS update. You do have some updates for us.
I feel you.
Big accident.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'll start off with that one. So a little after five PM yesterday, we were notified of the structure collapse out there. You know, they were building a large hangar out by the airport.
Jackson Jet Center, right next to that.
Right next to it. It's me, in between that Firehawk helicopter building. It was actually kind of adjacent to that, but between that and Jackson Jet Center. Initial reports that there were, we got were that there were twenty-five to thirty people in, in and around the building. And so, you know, we ramped up the response, awesome Boise Fire. We ended up with a total of four critical patients, two that weren't as critical, two what we call green patients, sort of walking wounded but still need to go to the hospital. One patient refused care. And then three deceased that were on the scene. So we at, at one point in time had ten ambulances at the scene. We did get three ambulances from acute rescue, which is a, a local private service, which that helps us because nine-one-one calls are still coming in for your everyday emergencies that we respond to. And so when you tie up ten vehicles at the scene, and now you've only got four responding to everything else going on in the county. And, and five o'clock in the afternoon is a busy time for us anyway, so. Acute rescue sent three ambulances and Canyon County sent two over with the supervisor. And we needed all of their help, so that was a, a good thing to have them over there with us. But I, I've got to say, our, our crews did an amazing job. You know, they took care of business, took care of their patients, did it very professionally. The two supervisors, the battalion chiefs that were on duty, did a really wonderful job of, as you can imagine, when you show up to a scene like that, it, it's complete chaos. And that's, you know, what we in the fire department, that's kind of our mastery, is making sense of chaos and just starting to organize things and doing that job. But, you know, I was certainly proud of, proud of all of our folks yesterday.
Well, that's, that, that's good. When I first heard about that, I'm like, wow, that's, that's. Somebody even said, oh, is that one of those parking garages? I couldn't imagine that. Wasn't this a big beam that may have been?
Yeah, if you can imagine, you know, those hangars are built with a freeze span so that aircraft can get in and out. And I don't know exactly what happened, but it's, it was basically just the frame. That, that's all they were putting together at that point, was the frame of one of those very large hangars that you can put a fairly large aircraft in. Just from the, the outward appearance, it looked like it was about the same size as that Firehawk helicopter's building, which is, is pretty sizable, so.
I, I drive by that almost every day, so I've, I've seen it going up.
Yeah.
So I've just, yeah.
Were you able to access everybody or were, I mean, did you have to move debris or were people trapped or?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, we, of course, we had to move some people. I don't believe anybody was trapped, but, you know, we got everybody out of there that wasn't deceased on scene and were able to get them to the hospital, so. At one point in time, it was probably twenty minutes into it, they started to realize that the remaining structure still had some tension on it and was unstable. And as you can imagine, that doesn't mean that, that our folks aren't gonna have to still go in. But once we, we got things to a point where we had patients out of the building, we started to kind of back away from the structure, making sure vehicles and people weren't in that fall zone so we don't injure any, any of our folks. But, you know, they, they did a wonderful job.
So how many, how many buses did you have take out there?
We had ten.
Ten.
Yeah, ten. We, we had initially five of ours and then three from acute rescue, that private service, and two from Canyon County. When the call came in, you know, five o'clock in the afternoon, and it's non-commercious for, for us to have eight or nine, nine-one-one calls already going at the time, so. That.
From traffic.
Traffic and heart attacks and you name it, everything's happening all at that, that time, just like every day. And so it, we were, we were truly thankful for those other agencies and stuff that happened and, and help us, helping us manage that incident, knowing that we still had everyday business to take care of in the field, you know. Can't wait on a heart attack or a car wreck, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for your good service to the community.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sure that all the people really appreciate it. And if I was laying on the ground hurt, I'd be happy to see an ambulance. Take me to the hospital. So I'm sure they all appreciate it as well, but I, we certainly appreciate it, I'll be happy to say so to the county, so.
Thank you.
Want to thank you for that. Thank your staff as well.
Will do.
Yes. These are the times that the community can recognize what you do and how much we appreciate it.
Yeah.
As, just as the population generally.
Yep.
Well, yeah, and, and it's hard, I'm sure that, that an accident scene like that could be a little difficult for your, your staff as well. If they see some people that are like them and they're hurt.
Yeah.
They'll follow their own, there's probably a lot of blood involved, that's probably, so we just appreciate your staff.
Yeah. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, we did, we had our peer support team, you know, just as the things were starting to wind down out there, we had our peer support team, you know, contacting crews that were out there, making sure they were doing okay. And we'll continue to follow those folks and make sure that they, that they're doing good. Human Resources did reach out and they were able to arrange through EAP if we needed to have a counselor come out on site. And so, but we actually, you know, with our peer support team, we're doing, doing pretty good.
Well, that's good. Again, express our thanks.
Will do.
Anything else you want to tell us?
Just a real quick update on the Sustainability Task Force. We, we met a few days ago just to start to kind of align our strategy on testifying in front of a committee. We don't have even an RS yet, but we do have two sponsors, Cender Birkey from up north and Cender Souter. They are both former fire EMS folks from out of state. They moved into Idaho, but they're both pretty passionate about EMS and they certainly recognize the challenges that we have in the state. And so they're gonna be the sponsors on the bill and we'll just see where it goes from here.
All right. Unfortunately, we have no COVID to report at all.
There, there's, I'm sure there's some out there, but.
Well, we don't want to hear about it. That's, hopefully that's, that's in our rearview mirror.
Yeah, it's just a normal disease that we're gonna have.
Oh, we're gonna have, I think it's just gonna be like common cold. People are gonna get it and they won't even know they have COVID. Oh, it's just a, a cold. But anyway, well, thank you. Anything else? The Commissioner got anything you want? Doctor there. Our director about?
Anything from the legislature, any movement on any of the legislative issues that?
We're, we're still waiting. I guess there was a meeting last week with some pretty high-ranking legislators to meet about moving the Bureau. I don't know what the end result of that is gonna be. But it seems like it's certainly real and I don't know if they were gonna try to add that to the bill that we have or.
I've never quite understood this essential services thing. Why the state declaring that, that EMS is an essential service? Why would it not be an essential service?
All right.
Yes, that's a good example. I just don't get it.
I think.
What is the context of the discussion of even not wanting to, I guess?
Yeah, that, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daly, you know, that's a, that's always been a thought in my head. I think most people in the state think it's an essential service, but if you're out in rural Idaho, you're kind of on your own.
Well, of course, you make that decision because I live out there.
Yeah. You know it. Play, yep.
If I, if I have an accident, it's gonna be a half hour before an ambulance can get here.
Yeah, if at all.
If at all. If you live in Garden Valley, you know your responsibility is gonna be different than you let them, you know, or ego.
Certainly. And, you know, and so I, I think that, that it's really the idea, because even when you look at, there's no official definition for what is an essential service at the state level.
Well, is there, and that's the other thing I haven't quite figured out, because you said, if they did get declared essential services in, in the world, is there some law that says if, if ambulance is an essential services, they get more taxing authority? I mean, what, how's that even involved?
Does it trigger something else?
I'm not aware of anything that it triggers. What the, the tie-in that makes it really essential is, is the second part of the law, is where they, they give the authority and responsibility to county commissioners to ensure that it's provided within the borders. Doesn't mean that county commissioners in a county where it's already being done by a fire department or whoever, that they have to take it on themselves. They just have to ensure that if somebody gets hurt in an area that doesn't have coverage today, somebody's gonna go out there. And so then the, the third part of the bill is the funding. And there are some of the funding schemas that I think will probably be next year or the year after that we're really gonna get some traction on. But one of the things, and, and I spoke to a legislator about this after our EMS one-on-one presentation about property tax. You know, if you put it on the county commissioner, you've got to give the county commissioners some kind of lever to pull, to say, this is how I'm gonna fund my EMS agency, because I don't think the state, I don't think it would be appropriate to say, hey, this is your responsibility, but we're not giving you any money to do it. Because that is an unfunded mandate, nobody wants that. So, you know, where, and, and that's where it becomes complex, because Clark County has I-15 running through it and eight hundred residents or fewer than eight hundred. So you couldn't, there isn't enough property tax coming out of there to, to fully fund it, yet you have a freeway going through there and they respond to all the calls on those people that are coming from Utah or Nevada or Cal, you know, people that don't even live in the county or the state.
Or don't even plan on stopping.
Or stopping, yeah. And so, you know, trying to find it, you know, of course, we can't put up a toll, an EMS toll when you hit the state border and it says, pay your EMS tax to drive through Idaho. I guess you could, but we're probably not gonna do that.
So in other words, if it's declared as essential services, then the county is responsible for trying to, to, to account for it.
Try to fund it.
Yep.
And so, and so, so that would be an unfunded mandate unless they provide some money.
Unless there's some money behind it. And so year one, they, they're creating what's called, there are three existing funds within the EMS Bureau. They would create a fourth that would then go out to agencies that apply for that money. And to apply, you have to be billing eight, at least eighty percent of your calls that are billable, which of course we do. And we actually found out most agencies that bill do that in the state. And then the county commissioners would look, let's say, in Ada County or in, in Vannock County, three agencies apply. Then it's up to the county commissioners to figure out who gets what, depending on what the needs are. And then moving forward, you know, one of the things that, that I think, I think is a good idea, but I'm not a legislator, is you're gonna give the county commissioners, you know, we, we're penalized by this, the three percent cap, and our levy is now under point seven mils. And it's just not, it's not paying for the growth that we're seeing. You know, I need to put seventeen ambulances on the road today and we can only do fourteen. And, you know, growth in call volume doesn't make up for the growth, you know. So it's sort of the chicken and egg or the cart and the horse kind of thing. But if, if you make it essential and say the county commissioners are responsible, if you have a tax in, in EMS district, put a three-year sunset on it, but let the county commissioners, like they could before the three percent cap, come out and adjust the levy. Let you do it one time to adjust it to what, whatever you need with a three-year sunset on it. If you don't do it in that three years, it's gone. Or if you do say it's essential, make the threshold to change the levy a simple majority as opposed to a super majority.
So those are the issues of why the legislature, when it would actually have some debate over, over declaring, are declaring EMS an essential service.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that, for that education, because I've sat here before and said, essential service, I'm like, why would it not be an essential service? Have an ambulance available.
Some of the ramifications of why, why there's even a discussion about it.
Yeah. And that, you know, the funding, we're also talking about pilt, but not the existing pilt. And it, another pilt that would be just for EMS.
Yeah, Mark.
Yeah. A lot of different things, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Is there anything else needs to be brought before the, the board?
No, sir.
All right. We'll be adjourned.
All right.
Thank you much. Appreciate it.